And there's an amendment to the agenda, which is the capital, the carry forward for the capital projects will be deferred to the next meeting. And that's been, that change has been circulated. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please?
So moved.
Council Thorburn, seconded by Mayor Tanner. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. You have the minutes from March 8, 2021, council meeting there? Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none. Motion to approve the minutes circulated. Council Caldwell, seconded by Council McDonald. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And we're right down to planning items. Liquidity split. Application for development agreement and notice of public participation meeting for 333 King Street. And we'll turn it over to our plan.
Thank you. It's just a brief overview. So we received an application for 333 King Street. There is an application for a development agreement to permit five buildings on that lot, five units each, so 25 units in total. The layout is proposed to be two buildings towards the front on King Street and some parking in between, and then three towards Prince Street. The buildings are proposed to be two and a half stories, a mix of two bedroom units and one bedroom units. And the applicant intends to do as much affordable housing as possible. And so the application is for a development agreement to permit this. And there is a public participation meeting this Wednesday, 6:00 PM here in council chambers. But there is also a virtual option, so people can have a video call or call in as well.
Okay. And where do they go to get that information for the virtual?
They can call the Community Development Department, and then we'll send them a link.
Perfect. Are there any questions from council? Obviously, this will come back to us as things progress. Any questions of the planner? Council Thorburn?
Not really a question, but a comment. And it's really pleasing to see some affordable units come to this meeting. I don't think we've had many come here, but it seems like a project that's going to provide some affordable housing, which we need and can use. So, one more.
Anyone else? Someone prepared to make a motion? Don't everybody, everybody jump? Anybody?
Is there a motion to be made?
Is there a motion to be made?
No, no, he is just, yeah, just for information.
Oh, okay. I thought we had to approve the public participation meeting. That's why there's no motion. There you go. Okay. Well, there you go. Thank you. I missed announcements. I'm just on a roll today. Are there any announcements from members of council? No? All right. Still quiet during the time of COVID. Down for Correspondent for Action, we have a letter from the president of South Shore Lumberjacks requesting a letter of support. And this also, this request also went to MODL, and they've already given their letter of support. So for those who don't yet know, there's been a change of ownership for the South Shore Lumberjacks. And so the league is really interested in a letter of support from the two municipal units supporting the ownership transfer and that the LCLC remains home for the team. So is someone prepared to make that motion? Council Caldwell?
I move the council to provide a letter of support, as requested in document 21-035, in support of the ownership transfer and the LCLC remaining as home ICE for the South Shore Lumberjacks.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Fager. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to reports and recommendations, we have RFP 2020-15 Engineering Services for the Bridgewater Business Park Connector Road. And Mr. Feener will run us through this one.
So on January 21, the town issued a request for proposal for engineering services for the design of the underground infrastructure and future road upgrades for the new connector road in relation to the interchange project. The town received five submissions before the February 24 deadline. Staff evaluated the submissions based on the five criteria outlined in the proposal and determined that design point engineering score is the highest overall score. Staff included a number of provisional items that may have some duplication depending on the scope of work that NSTIR will be conducting for the road design. And that gives us the ability to exclude the duplicated work from the contract. We had estimated a budget of $685,000 net HST, and the actual cost for engineering services will be deducted from the town's total contribution towards the interchange project. We are recommending that council award the request for proposal to the highest scored submission, design point engineering, for an estimated cost of $428,000 net HST.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Feener? This is kind of an exciting next step for this project. That's, seems to be going quickly.
Looking for a motion?
I am.
All right. We'll help you out. I've moved at council for the town of Bridgewater, endorse recommendation of staff and award RFP 2020-15 Engineering Services to Bridgewater Business Park Connector Road to Design Point Engineering and Survey Limited for an estimated value of $410,000, $428,000 net HST, of which the actual cost will be deducted from the town's contribution to the exit 12A project.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have the building permit report for February 2021. And things are just trucking along in the town. So that's good news. So that's there. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Mr. Hopkins. And the next item is the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee, request for 2021-22 budget. Is there? Yep. Do you want to speak to that, please? Thank you.
The Downtown Planning Advisory Committee has some recommendations for council to consider with respects to this year's budget. The committee had originally intended to look at phase two of the King Street upgrades, which would go from the old bridge to Victoria Road. And that's been pushed out in the capital budget a bit. So, and they also were charged with helping implement council's economic action plan, which ended in 2020. And there used to be $10,000 in the budget for that as well. So they had a conversation about things that they could be doing and working on. And they made a recommendation to council. There's three there. One is to look at where the fountain was. And if the fountain is not going to be reinstated or installed, that perhaps council might direct staff to look at some options for lighting, since the, all of the electricals run to the spot, that we could look at some type of option there. So they recommended that, and that we perhaps give some consideration in our budget this year to that. They also recommended that there be a small amount in the budget for projects that they may wish to initiate that would improve the downtown. So they recommended $5,000 be incorporated into the budget for that. And that staff explore with the Department of Transportation in advance of the 22-23 budget, options for having lights installed on Veterans Memorial Bridge. So those are the three recommendations that are coming forth to council. In terms of budget implications, this year would be the $5,000 that would be put in the budget for small projects. And we could explore options for lighting in the river where the fountain is, but there's no budget indicated for that. So it may be more exploring opportunities and planning for the following year. But, so those are what's here before council for consideration.
Any questions? CAO for that? Council Thorburn?
Tammy, has there been or will there be any discussions? I know it's come up a couple of times now in my terms here about some sort of lighting on the new bridge, complementary to the lighting on the old bridge, which Harlan and I got involved in a few years ago. So.
In terms of seasonal, are?
No, year round.
Year round?
Yeah.
Like the, the white lights that are up at the, okay. I think there was electricals issue on the bridge, is it, is it not, Larry?
There wouldn't, I guess, a dedicated power supply for that now. It was looked at, I guess, discussed a number of years ago. I believe, if I recall, we had some, some budgets for engineering for support structures as well as lights. And I want to, I shouldn't really state without looking into it, but I think like it was $50,000, $60,000, I believe, for lights, support structures and engineering. But we could certainly go back and check those numbers if council is interested in that information.
You know, with the fountains coming out, and the budget for the fountain was, was fairly substantial. And I hear a lot of residents from Yorktown, and why don't they put something on the new bridge? And then with special events and Christmas and stuff coming up, you could do the same thing there. Because, you know, the old bridge is in the center of town, but the new bridge has three times the track.
So the item number three that, that DPAC did make a motion for was that they, the request for the 22-23 budget, the town council staff explore working with TIR to put lights on the bridge.
Yeah. No, I just know we had talked about that before. I just wanted to see where it stood. That's cool.
So the $5,000 is more for streetscape type improvements, I assume, versus nothing towards the fountain, replacement of the fountain piece, whatever that would be?
No, I think, and they had, like, even in the economic action plan, it was $10,000 for like public art and different things like that, that they could explore.
Other questions? So there's a couple of options. We can refer further requests to, from DPAC to, for budget considerations. We can defer them to future budget years, or we can do nothing. Right? So you're looking for some direction, council? Council McDonald?
If we were to defer to the budget process?
Yeah.
We've only got a number on one of the three options. How would we do that? How does staff budget? Or put something in the budget without really knowing?
Yeah. So we would, we would put the, the $5,000 is, you know, that's pretty definitive. We know what that is. I would suggest that we would probably explore options this year and come up with a solution for 22-23 for, for lighting. Otherwise, unless, unless staff have an idea of what decorative lighting would, would cost right now, which we haven't scoped that out. So.
Yeah, I think the committee has asked that, you know, we look further into lighting along King Street and as part of the beautification, if there would be grants that we would be eligible for. So we don't have a cost quote, I understand, right now for that. But I think that's something that the downtown planning wanted us to look into a little bit further, if we could have lighting along King Street. Yeah.
So the other option is we refer this to budget, and it gets put in the budget for this year, which would likely keep it in budgets for future years. And then we can debate as things come up. I would think that they would come to council and say, well, we got a quote on lighting, we need $20,000 in the budget. Or we don't have any plans for any projects, so we only need the $5,000. I would, I would think that once it's in, it will just move around as need arises.
The $5,000 or?
That, that line is in for DPAC.
Yeah.
I would think. Yeah. But it has to get there first, I guess, is what you're asking.
So if we were to approve, if we go through the budget process and approve $5,000 to DPAC, do they have the ability to then control that money? And if, per se, a bid was formed in the next year, transfer that to start a bid, to start up, start up money for a bid, I guess?
I don't think that was the intention.
No, I know.
Yeah. So the, the town would control that. So we would put some parameters around what the spending within that would be for. So if it's for beautification or streetscape improvements, those types of things, then staff would, would administer that account, working with the committee to ensure that the projects met what the intent of that was. But I don't believe it was.
No.
No, for bid. It was more visible things that you could see immediately.
That's a good question. Okay. Council Caldwell?
Excuse me. With the, looking into options for the fountain, would that have to, that wouldn't have to go to budget deliberations with?
No. We would just need direction on that. And chances are, as I say, it would be something that we would scope out and have in the 22-23 fiscal year.
Do you mean like options in terms of putting lights in instead of the fountain or something different? Or you mean options in terms of putting the fountain in or not putting the fountain in?
Yeah, perhaps moving it somewhere else.
Yeah.
Other than in the river.
Yeah. Options for the fountain, you mean?
A future home for it?
Yes, yes. If there was a budgetary impact chance, it would, it would, it would get pushed to the following fiscal year. Unless we reallocate it and, or fund it from reserve if it was that.
Any other questions on that? What's the wish of council? Do, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I move the town council, the town of Bridgewater, refer these three requests from downtown planning advisory committee to the budget considerations for 21-22.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So now we're down to 9.5. Tender 20-10E, supply of new articulating municipal tractor, which is a fancy way of saying sidewalk plow. Municipal tractor. Is that smaller than a provincial tractor, which is smaller than a federal tractor?
It's tiny. It's got to get around a sidewalk.
Does it mean your tractor can't run a deficit?
Good evening. Yeah. So the 2022 budget includes the purchase of a new sidewalk plow for a budget of $180,000. The purpose of the sidewalk plow is to replace an aging unit. The fleet size right now is three, three units that we have, with the oldest being a 1999 Tracless. Making, the plan would be to surplus that one and making the 2005 the next oldest machine. We did issue a tender in January, closing in February, early February. We received two submissions. They were evaluated by staff for the criteria of, of tender price, compliance with specifications, and added value. and added value. The, after evaluating them, the tender submission with the highest overall score was Saunders' equipment. Green Diamond should be noted that they did have the lowest price, but they did not provide all the required details or deviated from our specifications without reasons. They were not, their machine was not capable of using our existing attachments, and there's a number of safety features that aren't met or without use of aftermarket equipment. So also, including the tender, was the trade-in value of our oldest unit, the 99 unit, and it was only valued at $5,000. So with a desire to improve our level of service for COVID, but also trying to make sure we meet our level of service, staff are reconsidering the, to repurpose it or keep it in the fleet as a spare unit. So we would run three machines and have that third, fourth machine there for spare if there was a breakdown, but we could also get out to our sidewalks faster and also plow the trail, which we've got good feedback on thus far. In terms of the budget, it was $180,000. There is a table in the memo which gives the breakdown of the tractor itself, or the sidewalk plow, the automatic greasing system, which was a provisional item that does save on operation and maintenance, the replacement fuel, sorry, filter kit, and the upgrade of the one-way plow to the five-way plow. The total cost of $151,364, or net HST of $157,851.46, looks to be under budget, which is great, a little over $22,000. A portion of that $22,000 will be made to brand the unit and make sure it gets a two-way radio system in it as well. So staff, looking at it, are making the recommendation that we award this tender for the supply of the new articulating municipal tractor or sidewalk plow and specified attachments and purchases. Tender 20-10E to Saunders' equipment for a total cost of $151,364 plus HST, or $157,851.46 net HST, and do not trade in or deem surplus the 99 trackless unit. Rather, keep the machine so long as it decided to increase snow removal operations, level of service for both sidewalks, and Centennial Trail. Thank you.
Thanks. I've had quite a bit of feedback on the clearing of the Centennial Trail, like positive feedback. Lots of people asking if that will be, the level of service we'll maintain, just because now they're using it in the winter. I've talked to people who would normally be driving to work, living on that side of the river, working on this side of the river, that are now using the trail and walking to work in the winter. So that's been great. The other comment I want to make is, I think it's, these units have worked pretty hard. So I think it's pretty impressive that our oldest tractor is a 1999, and it's, you know, it's been running this long. It's not, not all our equipment can last that long because it's worked so hard. So I think that's, I just think that's pretty impressive. Questions? Mr. Davidson? Council Caldwell?
I'm just wondering if perhaps next spring, we could have a report or talk about a comparison of what the level of service is with the fourth tractor, to see if we want to continue that going forward when the fourth meets its eventual demise, if we need to replace that or go back to three.
Yeah, that's actually, that's really a question. Yeah, it's a good idea. So I'm sure that's something that's doable. Other questions? Councilor.
Just a small one. It seems like we were, was replacing a piece of equipment because it fell, it had used its normal lifespan, and now we're repurposing it and not getting rid of it. So it would seem to me that that would cause an increase in your expense budget if you're going to run four plowed versus three, and would also increase the cost of labor. I hope all those figures are in their budget when they present.
Yeah, we did, under the COVID-19 restart funding, that the town received, council allocated, I believe it was like $28,000 in additional costs for winter maintenance on our sidewalks and our trails. So we have it, and we have that carried over into this coming fiscal year as well. And to Council Caldwell's point, we'll have to review that in advance of next year's, in advance of 22-23, to see if we wish to continue with that level of service, because you're quite right, there is an additional cost to do that.
So that money in the budget, if what you're telling me, and I understand it correctly, is COVID money that was given to the town. It's not coming from our ratepayers.
It's grant money.
Grant money, yeah. I think that's important to understand.
Yeah, no, and I'm glad you raised that, so people understand that some of the money used was, you know, to get people outside, more active, increase their options for physical distancing safely. So one of the recommendations was to maintain the trails in the winter to get people out and around. So it's worked, but it would be nice to not only get the information as Council Caldwell requested, but also, I hope during our Talk Bridgewater sessions, that we'll get that feedback from people, because at some point, it does come out of our, from our ratepayers. So the question is, is that the new level of service that they want? Because then they have to pay for it. So we have another year to figure that out, because we have enough money to go through next winter as well, but we'll have to be asking those questions. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I will. I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater award tender 20-010E for the supply of a new articulating municipal tractor sidewalk plow with the specified attachments and appearances to Saunders' equipment limited at a cost of $153,364 plus HST, $157,851.46 net HST.
Thank you. Yeah, $151,364. Seconder? Council Fager? Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Down to business arising, unfinished business. This is application under chapter 184 of tax exemption bylaw. And this is something that has come before and then coming back. So I'll just turn that over to the CAO to run us through.
So at the January 11th council meeting, council considered an application for tax exemption for nonprofit organizations for 629, which is the former Roffeys Building, and 641 King Street, which is the former Gaus. And the application was for full tax exemption for the main level of 629, which would be the commercial component, which had a value of $3,421, and 641 King Street, which was full tax exemption. At that time, council did not approve the application, as council felt it did not meet the bylaw. And the bylaw requires that, in its general criteria, that the applicant can show that the assessed address location is the site of the programs and or services of the organization. So council felt that that meant it had to be occupied for the purposes of delivering the program or services. And therefore, with no indication of when that would happen, council did not grant either application. Staff did advise that 629 had permits issued for renovations for the purposes indicated, but not yet occupied, and 641 just had some demolition, but nothing else was issued to indicate that something was moving ahead. Once the decision was communicated to the applicant, they expressed concern that the council's refusal may be perceived as a lack of support for the project from funders, and suggested that approving the tax exemptions would function as a co-investment by the town in the projects, and something that the funders look for. And regardless, council's obligation is to ensure that it meets the bylaw. So that's what, how you have to look at that. And there may be other ways to indicate support for the project as well. On February 19th, the applicant submitted a new request, after indicating that there was some information that perhaps may be of relevance to council. So the request was for 629 for full exemption of the entire building this time, but all floors, including the residential component, whereas before it was just for the commercial. And then for 641, they asked for written commitment outside of the bylaw and pending development agreement approval to provide for full tax exemption once the development approval had been achieved, and full tax exemption on 32 base rate affordable units at 641, and no future property tax on the nonprofit, social, and private and civic spaces at 641. So 629, they were asking for the tax exemption for the entire building. They indicated that it would be occupied by April 1. 641, there is no development approval in place. So they were asking that council commit to providing that tax exemption once development approval was in place, and that it'd also give full tax exemption to the affordable housing units that would be included in the development, and no property tax to be applied to any of the nonprofit or social enterprise components of 641. So when council considers this request, council's required to ensure that it complies with the bylaw. So it's not, it's not a reflection of the value of the project, it's a reflection of what the bylaw says council may or may not be able to do. So the bylaw requires that the property to be exempt is the site of the program or services of the organization. So we, it's been indicated that 629 will be occupied by April 1. So if that's the case, then council may, you know, wish to consider it subject to that occupancy on that date. Tax bills go out, I think it's the end of May, or beginning of May, yes. So we would still have time to catch that if it wasn't occupied. So if you prove now, we can still have the exemption in place for the spring tax bill. They also have to demonstrate a financial need. And if they don't receive the tax exemption, they wouldn't be able to deliver the program or service. And the applicant is offering a service to the neighborhood or region that enhances the quality of life for special needs populations such as youth, seniors, persons with disabilities, and also disadvantaged communities and people. The exemption level of full or partial tax exemption is, for full exemptions, we bring the taxes down to zero, has to be for occupants that deliver a service otherwise offered by the municipality, or a service not likely to be offered directly by the town, but is supported by the town as a priority community need. And partial would be the conversion from commercial to residential rate for a service not likely to be offered by the town, but is supported by the town. So 629, as I indicated, the applicant has said it would be occupied by April 1. Therefore, your concerns about occupancy would be addressed at that time, and the intended purpose does meet the requirements of the bylaw. But as indicated, the difference between the last application for 629 and now is they want full tax exemption for all use within the building. And thus, the main floor being the housing support access point, as well as the support housing, which would be on the other levels, and still meeting the intent of the bylaw. And 641, 641 King is for a development that, it's intended for a development that will consist of 48 to 50 housing units, 32 of which will be affordable, as well as social enterprise and civic spaces. But there's no permits in place, there's no development approval in place, and there's no indication of when occupancy would occur. This request, in staff's opinion, is outside the tax exemption bylaw, as the commitments to future tax exemptions is, for something that does not yet exist, is not provided for in the bylaw. So it's a promise that you're unable to make, because the bylaw doesn't provide for you to commit to future tax exemptions. In fact, you're required to, if uses cease, you have to, you have to change your schedule and remove uses from the bylaw, because they're no longer providing that service. So there's a constant updating of the bylaw. In addition, there's a number of factors that, you know, council's dealing with right now that could influence that decision. So you're looking at affordable housing and how to incentivize that. The financial need of the organization is a criteria that's listed in the bylaw. We don't know what it could be when the development actually happens. So they have to demonstrate that there's a financial need, and they couldn't provide the program or support without the tax exemption. And as I said, the intent is that there's a use on the property, and there isn't one there now. The financial implications to the town would not, are not known, because we don't know what the assessment's going to be on that property, and therefore, you're committing to a dollar figure that you're, you don't know what you're committing to. And you may decide to amend your tax exemption bylaw at any time, and it could be different come the time of that application. So there's just too many, too many unknowns at this point in time to make a commitment or a promise for future tax exemption. However, you may wish to write a letter of endorsement for the project, and your willingness to consider a tax exemption at the time the application is made, and provided the requirements of the bylaw are complied with at the time of the application. So it's staff's opinion that committing beyond consideration would be something that's difficult to do, given all the unknowns with respects to that. In terms of the financial implications for 629 King, as it exists today in 2021, the cost to give full tax exemption would be equivalent to a $10,000 grant, $10,456.41. So that's what, it has the same impact as if you were to give a grant for that amount, because you're basically not collecting that tax revenue. And as I say, that's based on the 2021 assessment rule, and as it's developed or occupied, assessments will change over time. And the tax exemption value for 641 is not known, and as indicated, it doesn't comply with the bylaw. So council has a few options. You can, it's too late to reconsider. When you look at kind of rules of motions, this is probably technical motion stuff right now, but it's too late to reconsider the motion that you made to not grant. And reconsider is one formal, one way of acting on it, trying to reverse the decision, because you've already acted on it, we've already given the applicant that. But if you want to revisit it, you could repeal that part of the motion that said that you would not grant the tax exemption to 629. And when you repeal it, it's like taking it off the books, and then you can, then you can do something different, because it's a decision that can be reversed, because there's been no, like, action that is irreversible. So if you want to do that, then you have the options of looking at granting a full tax exemption for the entire building, or a partial, like, to look at what the original ask was, which was just the commercial floor component of it as well. So the, and I've had the breakdown of that, too. So the full is $10,456. The commercial component is $6,086, plus the special purpose tax of $91.98. So you have some, a couple of options there. They are asking for the entire, entire building, or you could not grant the tax exemption. So if you want to revisit that and grant something, you'll be required to do a partial repeal of the motion that you made on January 11th. And that would be to basically strike out, and I've highlighted in the report, the tax 629, and, and just leave 641 in there as the one that you're declining. And with 641, as indicated, it doesn't comply with the bylaw, so your options is to not approve the request for a future tax exemption, period, just leave it at that. You could not approve the request, however, write a letter of endorsement in support of the project, and the willingness to consider a tax exemption at the applicable time, and commit to a future, you could commit to a future tax exemption, provided it meets the bylaw requirements at the time. So you can, you can say, we'll consider, or we will at the time, at the time you make your application, provided it meets the bylaw requirements. So those are your decisions. And so if you, if you do want to revisit 629, what's required to repeal is you're required to give notice. So notice is given, would be given tonight, and it would basically state that at the April 12th council meeting, you wish to get, you give notice now that at that meeting, you will wish council to consider a partial repeal of motion 21-252 to remove the tax 629, and, and then we would then consider everything at the April 12th council meeting.
So you don't actually need a formal motion to give notice?
Someone, someone just has to give it.
But my take from the conversation we had at the January meeting was, the barrier really was that the building was empty. We didn't know when it would be. It wasn't that the use wasn't something that we found valuable. It was that, that we didn't know when the use would take place. And so I think at the time, I kind of gathered that the, the intention of council was that we would like this to happen. We just needed to know when. So if that is still the will of council, then as, as the CAO said, we have to give notice. So is someone prepared to give notice that we will do a partial repeal at the April 12 meeting? And of course, we're going to vote on it then.
Yes.
So it, this does not mean it passes because it has to be debated at the time.
Can we ask questions before?
Yes, for sure, yep.
The building's been vacant for quite a while. And for the tax year 2021, which we're in now, were the taxes paid at 629 King Street? Or have they been paid the last three or four years?
That's my understanding they have, but I can confirm that before the April 12 meeting.
And that would be the same thing on the 641. There'd be taxes over and on to it. Somebody owned it, somebody bought it, somebody's responsible for it.
Yep.
We'll get that information.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's paid before you do your repeal.
But we're talking the 2021, 2022.
That's right. This would, this would apply to the bills that go out in June or May.
This is just on a going, go. Other questions? Deputy Mayor?
I'm still not 100% clear for whatever reason. It's my foggy head of the partial exemption option. So what would be, what, which component would be, would you be partially exempted?
You could just revert to the, well, so. Yeah, the original request was just for the commercial floor or commercial level, which is the main floor.
Okay.
And you could just give full tax exemption to that. The other thing, you could look at partial, which would revert it down to commercial.
To residential. Commercial to residential.
Sorry, yeah, commercial to residential.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Other questions?
So, just for clarification. So their address at 48 Empire, they don't get a tax exempt now?
I don't know.
I don't believe it's on the list.
Let's just, I got it right. The, no, from, they don't get full. The full tax exemption, there's only two other properties on it.